Okay, so we will call the meeting to order for the regular council meeting for Monday, October 20th, or just went back a month in time, Monday, November 20th, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. So I will ask everyone to rise if you're able for the singing of O Canada.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us common.
(Singing) Car ton bras et porté les pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits.
God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, everyone. So welcome to folks viewing at home and to members of the gallery. We will get on with the meeting and I'll ask our CIO to do the roll call of councillors, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. District One Deputy Warden Sean Sampson.
Present.
District Two councillor Michael Digdon.
Present.
District Three councillor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
District Four Warden Amanda Mumbercutt.
Present.
And District Five councillor Brent Sampson.
Present.
All right. Thank you, CIO. I will ask if there are any items that need to be added to the agenda. I know I had one for Festival of Treats. Are there any other items to add? Okay, so then I think it's the addition, I think the second reading for the amendments to the Almeda Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw to allow for small-scale campgrounds and recreational vehicles to be used as seasonal main dwellings or seasonal accessory dwellings as of right within the Rural General Zone and Rural Resource Zone and to insert the accompanying definitions. So we'll add that item as well, the second reading. Are there any other items to add? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you councillor Sampson.
Could I have a second or please?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hey, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item is the review of minutes from the public hearing of October 23rd. Those were provided in the package in advance. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes? Okay, hearing none, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillors. Are there any other discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, right, that motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the review of the regular council minutes from October 23rd, 2023, and if there's no errors or omissions, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll move the approval of the minutes of October 23rd.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Could I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you deputy warden. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So we are in regular council and that's an opportunity for us to have a question period before we read our committee of the whole reports and the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee meeting report as well. So a little open question period for folks who are watching at home. The number to call is 902-226-9885. That's 902-226-9885. Or if there's anyone in the gallery who would like to ask a question, you're welcome to come up to the podium. And I will ask for folks who are watching from home to be sure to introduce yourself. Let us know who you are and where you're from when you're calling in. Okay, so it's pretty quiet. I think we'll move on with the agenda. So we'll move on to committee reports and for this one, I will refer to our deputy warden for our committee of the whole report.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The committee met on November 6th of 2023. The committee discussed the Calvin Presbyterian Church grant application for the Type 1 Infrastructure Grant Funds in the amount of $2,147.81. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to approve the Calvin Presbyterian Church grant application for the Type 1 Infrastructure Grant Fund in the amount of $1,000 and be fully allocated from the District Five funds.
Okay, the motion's been made. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The committee discussed the Destination Cape Breton Memorandum of Understanding with the municipalities. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to approve the MOU among the five Cape Breton Island municipalities and Destination Cape Breton.
Could I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Digdon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The committee discussed the Hartz 8 Reith fundraiser and unanimously agreed to refer the request to staff. The committee also discussed the response from Department of National Resources and Renewals regarding the deer population and unanimously agreed to refer the coordination of the meeting to staff. This concludes the committee of the whole report for November 2023 and I move its adoption.
Thank you deputy warden. Could I have a second on that, please?
I'll second.
Thanks councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, right, that motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee meeting. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure deputy warden if you wanted to cover that or if you and councillor Sampson had discussed. Should have.
The committee met on November 14th, 2023. The committee discussed the municipality of the County of Richmond Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. I move that the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee forward the proposed, forward the purpose municipality of the Richmond Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw to council and recommend the adoption of the documents while simultaneously repealing the former municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw addressing the development of wind energy, the Sporting Mountain and Shannon Lake Plan area documents with the following amendments. A zoning map in Lewisdale to follow the current extent of servicing. B clarify that small accessory buildings do not need a development permit and further move that council give first reading and schedule a public hearing.
Hey, thanks councillor Sampson. Any, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
This concludes the monthly report of the Planning Advisory Heritage Committee for the month of November 2023 and I move its adoption.
Thanks councillor. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Digdon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the first reading for the municipality of the County of Richmond Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. So I'd be looking for a motion to, to give, for council to give first reading approval for the, for the Richmond County Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw and further move to have staff to schedule a public hearing, tentatively for December 14th at 6:00 PM is what we're looking at for the time slot for that. Is there, would anyone like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you deputy warden. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, right, that motion is carried. Thanks folks, and so I guess we'll look at the December 14th at 6:00 PM for the public hearing on that matter. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the second reading for the RCMP Advisory Board Bylaw. So this is as mandated by the MGA, as I'll remind folks. The purpose of the bylaws is to establish the municipality of the County of Richmond RCMP Advisory Board as mandated by the Nova Scotia Police Act subsection 57-1, a body to provide advice to council related to the enforcement of the law, the maintenance of law and order and prevention of crime. So I would be looking for a motion that council gives second reading approval for the RCMP Advisory Board Bylaw.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks deputy warden. Is there any further discussion? I guess, and of course I will mention, we've had an RCMP Advisory Board in place, but this is just to make sure we are in alignment with the MGA. It's a little housekeeping item, so we do appreciate the efforts of the members of the public who are already participating in that process as well, so. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is regarding the Ekol-Bor sidewalk and driveway paving project and additional accessibility projects at various municipal-owned facilities. We were provided with a briefing note on this item that kind of outlined what staff was bringing forward as a recommendation to council. And maybe Troy, if it's okay with you, I could hand it over to you to give us a quick little summary, just so the folks at home are aware. Okay, you'll need to just press your button.
Forgot my button. Yes, with the new municipal capital growth program, we have, we reviewed our capital projects that are on the list approved by council from budget, the ones that would apply, and we need a motion from council to go with our application so we can hit the December 13th deadline. And we had, sorry, Madam Warden, and we had previously allocated these to come out of another grant, so that will open that up for us to have further discussions at budget time to see how we want to reallocate that, if we're successful.
Okay, it's a big if at the end, but worth stating, I guess. All right, so do councillors have any questions about the projects that were slated? These were basically on our capital plan and things that we had identified as a priority. Any questions or concerns about what staff has put forward?
Yeah, not, not as much questions or concern, but just thanks CIO and to our director of public works, Chris, and staff for, for acting on this so promptly. I think, yeah, I think it's a great idea and a great approach on our end. As you mentioned, we had, you know, approximately 244,000 set aside on our SSGF fund, so if we can, if we can leverage this municipal growth program fund and get this project done, I think it's, it's very important and I appreciate the promptness.
Thanks deputy warden. Any other comments or concerns from staff, from council for staff?
Just wondering how the, so it was determined the, like the order of preference? So just curious as to the decision-making, why the, why the sidewalk was prioritized over accessibility to our own facilities?
They just asked us to pick one, and I don't think, if they, right in their application, they said if you have multiple projects, you have to prioritize in case we only get one. So considering what we went through last year with trying to get the driveway and sidewalk and everything done here, we put that one to the top of the list, and there are still other grant avenues that we can use for accessibility as well.
Okay, thank you Troy.
Yeah, I think when you look at the total numbers, I think the, the sidewalk project is, is higher in value, so it's best for us to try to, to go with that approach first and then, yeah, use, use other funds for the accessibility project. Yeah, 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 thank you.
Bang for our buck, right? We're looking to try to make those dollars stretch as far as possible. Okay, so we'd be looking then for a motion to supporting the application to the province's municipal capital growth program for the Highway 206 to Ekol-Bor Municipal Office Sidewalk Extension and the accessibility municipal facility upgrades prioritized in that order. So would someone be willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you deputy warden. Could I have a second or?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Digdon. Is there any further discussion on the memo from staff on this matter? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hey, that motion is carried. Thanks folks. Hopefully we'll be successful in those applications.
Let's hope.
Let's hope. Okay, so I have a few items next on the agenda, just that I thought I should provide an update back to council and to the public regarding a couple of events that have taken place recently. So about two weeks ago, the first one was the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Fall Conference. So we attended this about two weeks ago, myself, the CIO and councillor Digdon were able to, were able to attend the sessions in Halifax. It did include, the sessions did include the NSFM Annual General Meeting, which means a newly elected board is, is in place now. So just maybe a thanks to Mayor Brenda Chisholm-Beaton for her time as the, the chair, the president of that board, and a congratulations to Carolyn Bolivar-Gatson, mayor of the district of Lunenburg, for taking on the mantle and of president for NSFM. So her vice president is Sandra Snow, mayor of Kentville, who is acclaimed, and of course, Brenda remains as the past president. I will say, from my perspective, there were some really excellent sessions on housing, diversity and innovation. I, you know, have discussed with a number of, of the board members, you know, about some recommendations on ways to improve the conference, and I know they always are looking for that kind of feedback. And the first, of course, in my mind, is to shorten it. It was really, it spanned over a four-day period and it was, you know, it started like the Monday evening and then went, or the Tuesday evening and then went all the, you know, all day. And actually, it started the Tuesday afternoon technically because there was a four-hour session on policing, which I know is a, you know, is something that's evolving right now, so the time was needed, so I understand that. But then, so kind of a pre-conference activity, but then there was the, you know, the evening sort of registration and, and then all day Wednesday, all day Thursday, and then half the day Friday, and it's, you know, from my perspective, that's taking us out of the, out of the county for a very long period of time when I think there are some opportunities to shorten it. I am also going to, you know, recommend that they incorporate a site visit to the, to the legislature or multiple site visits to the legislature as part of their program. Everybody does it anyways, and rather than skipping a session, I would like to know that it's, you know, that it's, you know, something that is part of the agenda and frankly would be good for provincial municipal relationships anyway. And of course, the other thing that I, I want to recommend to them and would like to get your thoughts on is to enable shared registration. So right now with our travel policy, we must attend at least 80% of the, of the conference, which makes total sense, in order, you know, in order for us to be reimbursed. However, once conferences last four days, it becomes really difficult and, you know, people are burning through vacation to do that. I know that's what I did. So, so I'm like, I'm wondering if, you know, would, would that make sense to some of you folks around the table that perhaps, like what if we could have two folks from, you know, somebody attend?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, you know what I mean? Or, or two, you know, and then somebody else attend Thursday, Friday, you know? Do you see something like that as being workable or of value to you, do you think? Or, I don't want to push it forward if it's?
Madam Chair, if I may, I was just talking to one of our partners here in Cape Breton and with the SEPI conference last week, they did exactly that for the members of their staff. I think that was three or four days, so they had different staff going on different days so they could all get, hit different topics based on what their area was, et cetera, right? So it's something worth considering and could easily go back to bylaw and policy for further discussion.
It could go to bylaw policy, but right now, currently, the way the registration works is you register for the whole conference as opposed to saying, you know, you'd go for a couple of days, I'd go for a couple of days. I know, I agree, especially when you have, you know, oftentimes in council, people who have day jobs as well, that it's really difficult to get that time. You know, like I would have liked to have gone on Thursday and Friday, I could have made that work, but I couldn't go all of the days, you know? So then it kind of takes you out of the, the running to go, and I think if we want to be more inclusive, that's a, I think that's a great plan. And then I think if they would agree to that, then through bylaw policy, we could talk about what the travel would look like for that. I think it's a small price to pay to get more people to go and make it less painful, and then you could also have each person just come back and report to council what they heard at the sessions or provide a written report or whatever. There's definitely ways to work around that.
Okay, thanks CIO and councillor Sampson. So if there's no objection, I don't think we need a motion, I, I will provide that in my feedback on the evaluation and hopefully, and I'll continue to discuss it with members of the board and hopefully we can make an arrangement of some kind. Okay. Any other questions for Troy or Mike or I about NSFM? I mean, I will say, it's a valuable networking opportunity and I, you know, I learn a lot at those sessions, but just could stand to be condensed. Councillor Digdon?
Yeah, I agree. It was, it really was, it was, you know, it's part and part, there's, it's a lot to take in, in a very short time for some of the subjects, but at the same time, there's subjects that don't really, I guess, affect each municipality individually. So I think part of the, I think something we, we could also consider if we can't do that breakup of two days and two days is that a conference like this might be something where we want to be a little less lenient on the 80%.
More lenient.
Oh, sorry, more lenient on the 80% of, you know, because again, on Friday, there really wasn't a whole lot, and on check-in day, there really wasn't a whole lot that was, that was, you know, of, I don't like to say of usefulness to our county, but really and truly that we weren't missing a whole lot by skipping out on the Tuesday or on the Friday, and Wednesday and Thursday was the core. So I guess, I, I think just on, on something that, on an event that's, that spreads over four days, then we may want to?
Sure, so let's, let's hear from NSFM then and, and then go from there. Deputy, or sorry councillor Sampson.
One other thing, I don't know whether you'd want to suggest it, and I don't know whether they'd want to entertain it, but I feel like, I could be wrong, but I feel like FCM conferences run right into the weekend, do they not sometimes? Like, like they'll run Thursday to Sunday or something like that, which might help some people with taking less vacation time, right? Like the, these are always during the week, and I, I think we all agree, it creates an impediment for those working during the, the week, whereas if you had something that was, instead of Friday, it was Sunday, and you could back it up a couple of days or move it forward a couple of days, it would require taking less time off of work. It may be more, more accessible for more people.
Yeah, no, that's a great point councillor, and it's certainly something I've brought up before, didn't really get a lot of traction on, but maybe I'll just slide it into our presentations here as well.
Madam Warden, I like the, I like that suggestion about going to province house as well. Would you like to elaborate on what we were hearing at the province house? No?
No, I think, I think it's just, I think it makes, you have all of those municipal officials in the, the capital city, it makes a whole lot of sense in my mind to make sure that we're, that we're taking advantage of that opportunity, you know, connecting with our MLAs and, yeah, okay.
How good would it be for them to see all of us up there too?
Really, yeah.
In the gallery.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, that's great. So if there's no other questions on the NSFM, I'm going to move us on to the next item on the agenda, which was the Bedore Lakes Collaborative Environmental Planning Initiative, SEPI, honoring Two Eyed Seeing Conference. I do want to just, I think I've said it before, but it really was a groundbreaking event, first of its kind, that was held in Member 2 last week. It included guided cultural journeys, including land-based learning workshops, fortress tour and Sky River Trail presentation. The whole event was emceed by Senator Dan Christmas. It included an opening gathering with cultural music and dance. There were four plenaries throughout the two days of the conference and 28 concurrent sessions called Wisdom Circles. So there was a lot of content, and all of that content came through basically a call for proposals that was done several months back, and that was like, that was the level of response that we received. We could have filled, I'm sure, another seven days of content, but we were able to, you know, to narrow it down to 28 concurrent sessions, if that's called narrowing, but there was lots of really great knowledge and wisdom shared. The response, as I mentioned, was overwhelming, there were over 400 registrants, and then they, there were, you know, from looking at the room at Member 2 Trade and Convention Centre, there were 400, over 400 people there at the beginning, and there were over 400 people there at, for the very last session. It was, there was a high, high level of interest and people stayed till the very end. The Two Eyed Seeing Concept that was kind of born here in Unimagi by Dr Elder Albert Marshall, it's obviously spread throughout the continent and beyond. I had someone today tell me that they, they had done a bit of, some thesis work on the Two Eyed Seeing Conference, the concept, and, you know, they were pulling articles out of Australia about this concept. So it's, you know, it's definitely something that's had a global impact. The presentations and participants were from all over, really, North America, you know, from the Yukon to the northeastern US and lots of folks from Ontario. So I think it was important for Richmond County to be part of that work, and I do, I do want to take the opportunity to thank council again for their support. You know, there was a strong, strong environmental and sustainable development, you know, discussion point as part of the conference too, which I think is important for us, given that we have water on both sides, all sides of our county, both the lake and the ocean, so. Yeah, so is there any questions on the SEPI conference? I will also say, stay tuned, because you will, will likely be doing a bit of summary on the SEPI website about it, and maybe that is something that we could link to, because we're trying to figure out a way that we can take the conference experience and kind of virtually digitize it. I, I also have to mention that there was a MiMA simultaneous translation available at the conference in the main conference room, not at all the breakout sessions, and I, and I was able to listen in on, on part of that, and the women who were doing that simultaneous translation deserve a medal because, you know, some of, some of the terms don't even, you know, they were, they didn't exist and, and they just were champions at it, and, and I think it was a really, it was a really amazing thing to be part of and to hear that going on, you know, so.
Very cool.
Very cool. Okay, if there's no questions then, I'll move us on to the Richmond County Council and Village of St Peter's Joint Meeting. And I know you were all there, but I did want to pop this on the agenda just to ensure that members of the public were aware that this had been a public meeting that was advertised, first of its kind. I don't believe we've ever held a joint meeting officially with the Village of St Peter's. And in doing some post-meeting interviews with Talil in particular, you know, it really came to my attention that many, many people are not aware that the Village of St Peter's is a municipal unit. They are, they operate independently of the county, we, you know, we have relationship, historical relationship that has been primarily limited to like taxation collection and special projects, but, you know, certainly I know from our strategic plan, we heard loud and clear from the public that we, they wanted stronger relationships with local governments. The village, you know, the village would be one of those governments, certainly looking forward to strengthening the relationships with Budledek and the town of Port Oxford as well, but just wanted to kind of let folks know that, that had happened, and I don't know if you've had any feedback as a council on that joint meeting, but I'd be happy to hear about it and maybe look at planning something in the future to repeat, so. Any comments on that councillors? Okay, great, thanks for indulging me, I just wanted to make sure that was kind of part of one of our regular agendas as well, so folks would be aware. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, I'm going to hand things over to Troy for an an update on Reflections of Richmond, the Staff Long Service Awards and Recognition. So over to you Troy.
Thanks Warden. Yes, last Saturday, we had the opportunity to get together down in Lepicass, and it was a great night to recognize, well, there were nine people sharing a hundred and fifty-five years of service to Richmond County, and we got to reflect on, very much, their dedication and service, you know, so many of our staff born and raised here, and there's just that added bonus of getting to work for your community, work for your neighbors, work for your, the family, and it was, well, three of them alone had over seventy-five years of service, which was, which is great. Some of them sadly could not be there, we had the Warden, Deputy Warden, and Counselor Digdon there as well, which was great, because again, we are one team here, and we're trying to find those opportunities to bring staff and council together. We all work for the residents together, we all have different roles, and we're just building on those strengths. But a couple of them could not make it, and we're hoping that before the committee of the whole in December, when the directors are here as well, that we can finish off the three or four that need certificates and their plaques. And we finished the night off with, through the Wellness Committee, which was another initiative that came from this table as well, and from the staff, supported by council. And it was awards within the staff for champions in different areas of the staff, so who brings people together, who is the knowledge guru, who is this? So the staff voted amongst themselves for it, and it was a great way to end the night, because it was awards for the staff by their peers, and it was just a really, really nice way to see the staff recognize some of their own. So again, wonderful night, I appreciate everybody that was there, and the support of council as we work on the culture and celebrate the years of dedicated service of our staff to this county, so thank you.
Thanks CAO, it was a, it was a really, a great opportunity to connect, for sure, and, you know, thanks to you and your team for, for making the effort to do that, I think it's important. I was wearing a Santa Claus hat, because I, I was at Festival of Trees until about five minutes before that started, but anyways, but it was, it was a great evening, and I think a good practice to reestablish, so, thank you very much. Any questions for Troy on that item? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is correspondence. We had none with action required, but there are two items, just for your information, and I know you would have seen them on email copies going out, as per, I guess, the, the process we had all agreed upon, when letters of support come in, if, or requests for letters of support come in, if it aligns with, you know, the things that, you know, we've kind of said are, are okay in our strategic plan, generally I've been providing those letters of support, we just want to make sure that they do land on the, on the agenda as well, so that folks and public are aware that those letters are being provided. Any questions on those? Okay. The next item is the review of action items, and again, this is for information only. Were there any questions on the review of action items? Okay, so hearing none. The next item, or the items added, so the first item was on the St. Peters Festival of Trees, and really, I just wanted to add that, because I wanted to say publicly a thank you to the municipality, the municipal staff here for putting a tree in, and specifically, the tree was to collect donations for scarves and hats and mittens that can be given to...
I forget which charity it's going to be.
Yeah, it is, is so headed for a particular charity, but it, yeah, so it was, it was a really great opportunity to, you know, for the municipality to participate in the community event, but also to find a way of using that event to give back to, to the community. We had a little over four hundred people through the, through the Lions Hall that day, and I think a waitlist for the trivia that evening, so. It was a busy weekend in St. Peters, and lots of goodwill to, to go around, so please extend my thanks to the staff.
You'll do.
That would be great. Okay. Yep. So then the next item on our agenda is, sorry, did anybody have any questions about that? I forgot to check in, okay. So the next item on the agenda is the second reading for the amendments to the Almediam Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw to allow for small-scale campgrounds and recreational vehicles to be used as seasonal main dwellings or seasonal accessory dwellings as of right within the Rural General Zone and Rural Resource Zone, and to insert the accompanying definitions. So, the public hearing was just held, and so I would like to, I guess, look for a motion to approve the second read?
Sorry, I didn't realize a motion was going to happen, so I will declare my conflict and leave.
Sure thing. You're right, thanks Counselor Melanie Sampson. Alright, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve second reading for the amendments to the Almediam Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw regarding small-scale campgrounds.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Madam Warden.
Thank you Deputy Warden, could I have a seconder?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you Counselor Bren Sampson. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks folks, and Counselor Melanie Sampson is returning to the table. So the next item on our agenda is the question period. So again, this is restricted to the remainder of the agenda following the committee reports, and the phone-in number is 902-226-9885. It's 902-226-9885. And we'll just give it a few moments, in case there are any questions. Okay. You think that's enough time? I'm thinking we've probably passed the delay. Alright. I will have to actually specifically time it next time, so. Okay, and so it's quiet, so we will move on from question period, and I'll ask for a motion to move us in camera, please.
So moved.
Thank you Counselor Sampson, could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you Counselor Digdon, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So thanks folks, and we'll just give it a minute for the technology to catch up. So we're back in public session, and I believe we don't have any recommendations to bring forward at this time, so there being no further business, we will consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you everyone, and have a great evening.